Hello?
Hello? Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. City of Lamarck, City Council regular agenda of May first, two thousand and twenty five. Notices hereby given that the City Council of the City of Lamarck, Texas will conduct a special meeting on May first, two thousand and twenty five, beginning at two P M. in council chambers at eleven O nine B Bayou Road, Lamarck, Texas, as well as via video conference hosted through Zoom, in accordance with section five five one dot one two seven B of the Texas Government Code, the Presiding Officer in the form of the Lamarck City Council intend to be and will physically be present at eleven O nine B Bayou Road, Lamarck, Texas. This location will be open to the public and the meeting will be broadcast at this location on channel sixteen and via YouTube. The council will meet for the purpose of considering the following agenda. The meeting has been called to order. Ms. Nance, would you give us a roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Councilmember District A.
Present.
Councilmember District B.
Present.
Councilmember District C.
Present.
Councilmember District D.
Present.
And Mayor.
Present. Thank you, Ms. Nance. We would like to ask Mayor Protem to lead us in our invocation and Councilwoman Yancy would we would like to ask to lead us in our pledge of allegiance. This time stand if you are.
Almighty Father, we ask for your blessings upon each one of us, each of our residents of our community, for our state and for our country. It is always a great opportunity for us as public servants to put our faith into action as we try to do the work of our community and to meet the needs of our community. We always ask for your blessings in this effort. It is always in your holy name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Ms. Yancy. Before we get into citizens' participation, the purpose of this meeting is to do our first round of interviews with eight. Council, we are down to eight. Is that still right, Ms. Nance? I hadn't talked to you this morning. Eight. We're down to eight. This will be twenty minutes in duration per candidate. And at some point, Ms. Nance, I assume you expect us to emerge from our executive session with three to interview, though we can't vote. And so certainly you need to help us with how that is supposed to work. We'll let you think about that. And while you're thinking about that, we'll move now to citizens' participation. Citizens' participation is limited to three minutes per person. Comments from the public will be heard at this time. Any person with city-related business who has signed up to speak to council, limited to three minutes. If wishing to speak, they give the mayor or the Presiding Officer your full legal name, your address, and the item you wish to speak about. Compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the city may not deliberate on comments. Personal attacks will not be allowed. Personnel matters should be addressed to the city manager during normal business hours. Press star six to mute or unmute yourself if you are participating via telephone. Press the unmute button if you are attending via Zoom on a smartphone, tablet, or computer. That button looks like a microphone icon if I am not mistaken. And if you are attending in person, there is a podium with a microphone in the center of the room. And when your name is called, you may approach and you will be heard. Mr. Pritchett, are there any persons online wishing to speak? Very good. We do have one person representing the Texas City Independent School District wishing to speak today, and that person's name is Dr. Melissa Duarte. And so we welcome you, Dr. Duarte, and we welcome those members of the Texas City Independent School District. It looks like there is a few elected officials and some paid staff members, as well as some very young-looking folks in the back who I want to say are students, but probably are staff, and they're probably saying thank you, Mayor, for that compliment. And so we'll forego all of that. It is unusual for the superintendent of the school district to come and visit with us on a random Thursday, but this is extremely important. And so we yield the floor to Dr. Melissa Duarte and the Texas City Independent School District. Welcome, Dr. Duarte.
Thank you. Well, good afternoon, Mayor, City Council members. I am here before you to request that our city officials take into consideration the requests presented at the workshop that the city waive the remaining construction costs incurred to the district. TCISD has and is committed to continue to be a collaborative partner with the city, and we ask for the same. We have provided a site for the library summer camp with all fees waived because that is going to benefit our community and our students. We are a large employer to the citizens in the community. These partnerships are crucial to the success of a community. It is a blessing to have individuals here who care so deeply for the future of this community, our children. At no point is the district asking not to pay anything for its construction project. In fact, based on our civil engineer, Ellis Engineering, and the drainage study, we were adequate with the original planned drainage of three hundred and sixty-five acres, but the Galveston County Drainage District came back with a two thousand four hundred thirty-eight acre of drainage areas, which required additional drainage and an increase in the pipe size. This additional three hundred and seventy thousand dollar cost to the district was going to ultimately benefit the city of Lamarck. We incurred that cost. Additionally, we have paid one point two six million dollars in fees up to date for the new high school and athletic facilities. We know this money is well spent because it will provide state-of-the-art facilities and opportunities for children in this city. Both Texas City and Lamarck voters supported and approved these bonds. They trust that the district is being fiscally responsible for the funds to provide these facilities for our students, a brand-new high school and a football stadium. Additionally, our school board was dedicated to ensuring that we completed the entire LMHS facility, and they provided an additional nine million dollars from fund balance to build a softball and baseball field for the students. This dedication is a tribute to the passion and commitment for all children, Texas City and Lamarck. We are asking the city to waive only the remaining estimated three hundred thousand dollars in permit fees. This would be a twenty percent savings to the project, but offsets a portion of the additional three hundred and seventy thousand dollars spent on drainage. This three hundred thousand could be spent on instructional resources to support the programs we will be able to offer our students at Lamarck High School, opportunities that prepare them to be productive citizens in the city of Lamarck. There is no doubt that this group of representatives before us care about the youth in this city, that they want the best for our Lamarck High School Cougars. Our ask of the city is to bring this request to the full council for a vote. We know there's a meeting scheduled for May twelfth and would request to have this item on the agenda. We would be happy to be in attendance and address any questions that might be asked. I implore this group to support the school district, to support the students, to support the dedicated staff who have continued to serve our students in the fifty-plus-year-old building. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Duarte. As you know, we are not able to respond to you.
Absolutely.
But what we can do is, as point of information, we can share with you, share with you, there are three ways in which items appear on our agenda. The first way, obviously, is if the mayor places them on your agenda. The second way is if two council members confirm and those items are placed on the agenda. The third way is if our city manager places those items on the agenda. And so, Mr. Pritchett, do you need me to place this on the agenda, or are you planning on placing this on the agenda?
I do not. It will be on there.
It will be on the agenda.
May twelfth.
You have your answer, Dr. Duarte. That's about all we can share with you. I would suggest to you, before we retreat to our executive session, all of those pieces of information that you shared with us, that should be in council's hands. Those were some interesting facts and figures that perhaps we were not privy to in previous discussions. Very interesting to know that you have spent over three hundred thousand dollars on a change in drainage. Again, we can't go beyond that, but please bring that with you so that we can have the full story.
So I have a copy.
You can leave it now.
I hate to leave it to you because it has typos.
Oh, okay.
Please excuse that, all right?
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Very good. Before we retreat, again, we want to thank not only you, Dr. Duarte, but we want to thank your staff and members of our school board for appearing before us today. We take that to heart and we don't take it lightly. And certainly you already have your answer before you've left the building. So we see, we will look forward to seeing you again on May twelfth. Thank you. Item five, executive session. The City Council for the City of Lamarck, Texas reserves the right to adjourn into executive session at any time during this meeting to discuss any of the matters listed above. As authorized by the Texas Government Code, section five five one dot zero seven one, consultation with attorney, five five one dot zero seven two, deliberations about real property, five five one dot zero seven three, deliberations about gifts and donations, five five one dot zero seven four, personnel matters, five five one dot zero seven six, deliberations about security devices, and five five one dot zero eight seven, economic development. We will be recessing into executive session for section, for five one, section five five one dot zero seven four, personnel matters to deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, or duties of a public officer or employee, the city manager. We will do initial interviews of eight candidates today, and we hope to narrow it down to three candidates before we leave today. Council, if there's nothing further, Ms. Nance, we are recessing at two seventeen. Whenever you decide that you can stop sneezing, and that's another eight hours, we'll just sit here and wait. Not teasing. We are recessed at two seventeen.